So we'll begin the meeting of the Finance Committee, the new Finance Committee of 2022 term. We are meeting remotely per legislative and the governor's allowance. And that's still in effect until April, I guess. We have no minutes. Tom, you got the minutes that I sent you to show you that? I strongly recommend that you get to them right away because they pile up a lot very fast.
Yep, I've got it in a template. I'm gonna fill it in as we go.
Thank you very much. The mayor just arrived. Mayor, do you have any public speak? I mean announcements or anything other than what is on the agenda?
No, I don't.
Okay, so let's start right away with new business. I want to talk a little bit. I'm gonna share my screen. This is a simple thing. It's a something, a formality we must do. The pay plan, and I'm gonna say things, and I think, Tom, you're aware of this, but Connie, just to, so you understand it. The pay plan, as I show here, in December, the council approved. I'm sorry, I'm admitting people. The council approved $27,000 or so. Amount of money, supplemental appropriation to give our pay plan employees a COLA. Pay plan employees are non-union employees that are under the pay plan. There's grades, and this is the dollar. The Finance Committee does two things. It approves the financial amount, and it must also approve the ordinance which accepts this new. Here's the amount right here. We fail to put that ordinance into the, into the packet for that meeting. So we must do it tonight, or the nice COLA increase for pay plan employees can't happen. So this is what we have to do, amend the ordinance of Chapter 7, Article 2. Any questions? I, I need hands raised, both your little hand. I don't have everybody there. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to do differently. Connie, you all set with this? Because you're new to this. Tom, you're all set? Now, can I have a motion to accept the amendment to Chapter 7, Section 718, Exhibit B, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend Chapter 7, Section 718B, Exhibit B amendment to the pay plan ordinance to the full council. Further discussion. Hearing non-counselor Denham?
Aye.
Counselor Peak? Counselor, say aye. And Counselor Riss says aye. Thank you, I'm gonna stop the share. Now we have supplemental appropriations. Supplemental, just for the record, for people who may not understand it. A supplemental appropriation is a supplement to the budget. The budget was approved in June. And the mayor or the CPA committee, in this case, the CPA has the appropriating authority for CPA funds. The mayor, for all the other funds of the city, may ask through their department heads to supplement the budget by adding new funds from various sources. So this supplemental appropriation must be approved by the city, by the city council. We cannot increase these appropriations, just like we cannot increase the budget. But we can reduce them if we so choose. And that's where we're at. The first one is the new skate park, 42,500. As the current chair of the CPA committee, I can tell you there was a lot of enthusiasm for this. And before I turn it over to Jeff to go over it quickly. This new skate park was approved unanimously by the membership, I think it was eight to zero, actually, of the CPA committee. It's going behind 50-Pace and Avenue, adjoining a parking lot and into the land that's available behind the Public Safety Building. The CPA committee also asked that the design include a connection to the rail trail. These funds are for the design. Once the design is done, then, as Jeff will explain, we can apply for, the planning department will apply for, I think it's a park grant, Jeff? Shake your head, yes. Park grant to build the actual skate park. It's enthusiastically supported by the CPA committee. Jeff, I don't know if you can, where you are. I can share the map if I have to, but do you have the capability of doing that? And do you want to go over it? I'd like to show the counselors where this is, et cetera.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Dan, if you could share the map, I did not pull that up in advance. I can get it, but I didn't pull it up in advance.
Why don't you talk about it while I find it, because I wasn't prepared for that?
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that. No, this is an exciting project, as Dan described. This is for the process to go through design. It's, it involves some community meetings. It involves kind of coming, looking at the site. The site behind 50-Pace and where Dan described is, it's kind of unique. You know, it's not a square, flat area. And, and actually, the, some of the skate park design companies that we've gotten proposals from were excited about that, because it can create a unique place, you know, in East Hampton for skateboarders to, to potentially come from in the future. You know, we're not, we're optimistic, but there's nothing, you know, we have to get through this design phase in order to determine that the site is appropriate and that there is a, there's a suitable skate park that can come out of this. But we expect there is, but that's the purpose of the design. And, you know, the other part of the request is to come up with, you know, we come up with a couple of different versions. And then we would have community input, and we would refine it to kind of the conceptual design that is the preferred. And then the consultant will come up with a cost estimate for that. And basically, with the conceptual design and the cost estimate and the community, you know, involvement and support, that's, that really gives us the framework to go for actual grants for construction. I think Dan mentioned park. There are some other grants that are out there. So we would likely want to try more than one grant source or think about phasing the project overall. But this is, this is not the final time that you'll see, you know, us here. We'll have meetings, and then I think, generally speaking, the way we've approached park grants in particular is that the CPA, you know, would be probably asked for some contribution to construction. And that helps us leverage the CPA dollar with the larger state or federal funding for, for this kind of thing. There's a couple of people from our, the Skate Park Committee that are here, and I don't, Dan, I don't know if you want to hear from them. But the map, the map that's on the screen, you know, we're looking at the back of 50-Pace, and there's some really underutilized areas. We have trailers, dumpster, and a shed. And, you know, those areas, you know, we have to go through the Conservation Commission with a final design. So they will have some review of how close it is to the pond. But that area, you know, could be very viable. And the way this map shows is that there are a few parking spaces that we would expect to potentially be taken up, whether it's the three that are shown there or kind of going up along the side of the Public Safety Complex. But we won't really know the extent of that until we're in the conceptual design phase. And that's when we'll have the community meetings and get more information about that. And then the CPA committee, oh, go ahead, Dan.
Does everybody see this map, first of all? This is the one that the CPA committee enjoy, liked better than the other one, which is a lot larger. The CPA committee was concerned about cutting a lot more parking out. This is a primary parking lot for when the city, when the city hall isn't in service for downtown. So people could park there and enjoy our city. So they didn't want to see this much. So they liked the other one first, although I think, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, the design you're gonna do, you're gonna look at both, even though we prefer this particular one. Is that correct? They're gonna look at both, right?
Yeah, yep. And then there was that other map that was the aerial photograph with the yellow dash line. So, and then this kind of gets into the bigger picture. So, you know, I highlighted the rail trail in yellow and then the small dots. You know, that, that idea of that connection has been there for decades, actually. So the, the, the idea of this design can look at ways to bring people to the skate park. You know, we did have the discussion that we need to be mindful of what the construction costs would be and whether we, whether the skate park construction includes all of that other stuff. But we can look at it in the design phase for sure and figure out how it works out. But there is that other grassy area right under the word connections. And the, the preliminary consultation with some of the designers are like, what about that area too? So we kind of have this area that's just really underutilized that can be explored. And as I said, we kind of have, you know, one of them in particular was like really excited by this idea. So it's not something that is problematic. We did increase the budget slightly during the CPA discussions to kind of absorb those other, the other look around, but.
The CPA committee first was approached for, I think it was $36,000 or something, $1,000 for the design. And one of our members, Scott, wanted to see if this connection was possible to be built in. And we're very enthusiastic about this. It means that potential skateboarders don't have to go down the street and get over to the skate park. They can connect here. This connection is a little more controversial, because we don't want to cut out a lot more parking. We don't know what that'll be, but I guess it's part of the design. I'm just, I'm just stating what the CPA committee was thinking about. But this is, this was important, so we're hopeful that that can be afforded to. I want to open the floor to our committee members, if you have questions on this.
So I just had a quick question. Yep, sorry. This other piece that you said was right under the potential connection, so that is a space that might be considered?
No, this is, this is where the connection is. There is a cell tower going in there at some point.
Oh, okay. So I thought you just said that that might be a spot that they consider too. Okay.
That's not true, right, Jeff? There's, they're not considering this area for the actual park.
Well, it's, I would, I don't think it's highly likely, but it is, it is within the realm of possible. I think while the, while they're, because they're gonna be visiting all this fresh and new. And, you know, it could be there. It could be viable, but it might not be. So it's, it's too soon to tell, but they're willing to look at that whole area. And they're, they're definitely willing to look at the connection, the connections and bringing people through the back of, back behind Public Safety.
I thought the cell tower was a done deal.
Yep, the cell tower takes up kind of a small footprint.
I thought it was like right here or something.
Yeah, there's a row of parking spaces on the right side of, of the Public Safety Complex, and it's kind of like right behind that. Yeah, so they'll have to, they'll have, they'll have that site plan available to them and make sure, you know, it might not be viable at all, but it could be. And it's just something that, we don't want to rule it out, because it would be, you know, less parking spaces that would be, you know, taken up or anything like that. But it's, it's kind of too soon to tell, but I think it's within the realm of looking in that area.
Tom, do you have anything?
I had a bunch of questions, but I think they all got answered.
Well, I'm glad they heard. Just so, Connie, just so you're aware, the CPA committee often cedes money for design so that grants can be applied for. And this is part of the three areas that the CPA funding can happen, open space and recreation being one of them. What I also like personally, and I think it was echoed by some of the members, is that a skate park is a different kind of recreational activity other than ball fields, which we do a lot of. Soccer fields, baseball, and it's the kind, it's, it's kind of like the pickleball court when the CPA funded that. It's not, non-traditional kind of, of recreation. Not, it's not basketball. It's not, you know, it's not one of the major sports. And I've been seeing the one, it's one, it's off the rail trail in North Hampton, Skateboard Park in North Hampton. It's constantly used, so.
Dan, may I, may I add to that?
Uh, can you wait a second, Jeff? I'll get to you.
Oh, I apologize. Go ahead.
I want to wait and see if the mayor wants to say anything, because it's right behind her home. If she's in favor of this, I think you are.
Yeah, yeah, um, uh, yes, I, I am. My home, are you saying that the mayor's office is my home? That's a little scary. Um, no.
Well, you're there a lot.
Yeah, the, the outpouring from the public, the organization of the group, really. And, and I think it's, it's important to mention that the skateboard, East Hampton Skateboard Group has joined us in paying for environmental and, and design activity. They're good fundraisers, very engaged in this process, as well as several other folks in the community who thinks it's a great idea. And I, I'm certainly in, in support of this. Would love to see a positive recommendation out of this committee to full committee.
Just, just to also, it refreshes my memory, one of our members was concerned about the conservation. The conservation member on the committee was not concerned about the pond, felt that it can be protected. We're thinking about a fence so the garbage doesn't get in there, which leads me to, um, look at the other one. This is the one we're talking about. Uh, I'd like to, we have some members of the skateboard. What do you call yourself? The Skateboard Committee? The Skateboard Park Committee?
That's fair.
That's a fair committee. Anyway, they've been active, as the mayor said, in supporting this. And one of the things that we asked, the Parks Department is not involved in this maintenance. So that's something that this committee is gonna have to handle, right, Jeff?
That's correct.
Why don't you tell the other counselors who you are first?
My name's Jeff Burke, and I believe Noah McManus is also in the meeting tonight. We're both the representatives here from the East Hampton Skatepark Committee. And, you know, we, when we first started this process in 2019, we were looking at different locations around town. And, you know, open space is a big issue. So, you know, it didn't really work out with the Parks Department due to just not enough resources. So we started working with Jeff Bag and the mayor, and we came up with this location. And, you know, we fundraised to help pay for the environmental costs to look at this location and determine if it is actually a feasible location. And we've also talked to some of the members on the conservation community of the pond, and they were enthusiastic about the project as well. So, you know, we think this is a great location. You know, when Dan mentioned non-traditional recreation, you know, every town has a basketball court. Every town has a baseball field, and, you know, the specs of those fields are identical when you go from town to town. The neat thing about a skate park is that every skate park is different. They're not all built identically the same. So you have people traveling from town to town to try out different skate parks, which means that people are going to travel to East Hampton to use the skate park. You know, people in Westfield aren't gonna go to East Hampton to use a basketball court, because it's the same basketball court that they have in Westfield. But they will travel from Westfield to East Hampton to use our skate park. And that means when they get to East Hampton, they might also be interested in trying out a new restaurant, going to one of our breweries. So we look at it as an economic plus as well, so.
Do you want to add anything, Noah?
Jeff really took my talking point there. That's really it. We, we see it as an economic boon to the city. We think it's a huge thing for the, for the kids to get involved in. I did youth programming for about six years in San Francisco, revolved around after-school skateboarding. And so I think it's a really great thing for youth as an alternative activity, something a little less structured, and provides a lot of outlets for them. I think the skate park can also be used as a community space. You know, there's potential for sculpture or mural art, as well as, you know, community events happening. I know, like, this parking lot gets used a lot with the spot lots and things like that. And I just think it's a great addition to the town and a great place right in the center of everything for people to kind of congregate at. And I think it is gonna be a really, really great addition to the center of town.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So I'm, I'm looking at the picture that's on the screen. Is there a different, is the, the light greenish-gray space? Is that the actual part where they, the, I guess, the bowl or the, where they skate? And is the darker green like a green space, or is it just, that's the whole area that they're?
I think this is just representing that this is already paved and this is.
Oh, the parking lot, okay.
This is the entire park. Am I not correct, Jeff? If this were chosen?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I just want to be careful, especially for, you know, previewing next week's meeting. Like, I think the edges and the location, you know, should be considered kind of flexible at this point, because they haven't got in there. But that, we kind of, you're kind of like penciled in this as the general area. And so one of the, one of the key things we're trying to put the, with the outline is that it, it shows that the area is about 7,200 square feet. And I would say, like, generally, that's gonna end up being kind of a smaller park. Whereas it, you know, I, I think they can range in size, but, you know, 10,000 square feet is probably the average. So what we might want to, what we might see over time is they may, this, this shape may morph and move a little bit. But we want to be sensitive to where it goes in terms of the parking lot. But I think there are some areas that we could talk in the back. And, you know, so this is a general idea of where, where we want to look. And we will leave it up to kind of the professional designers to see if there's something that we're not seeing. And, you know, that'll be through that community discussion. We are gonna tell them, like, that parking is up at a premium. So, you know, that's why we kind of set those two, those two maps kind of show the general. Kind of one of, the second one that Dan mentioned is, is kind of like, that would be like the maximum that we would really want to see, if, if, if at all. But we just wanted to kind of be careful to show that we're not going to consume the entire rear area of 50-Pace.
Counselor Gomez?
I think Jeff just, thank you. I think just Jeff answered the question. By the way, I'm in favor of this appropriation and in favor of this park and in favor of the space that we're gonna use. The only concern that I have is, I know we have the dumpsters there. We have some city vehicles in those spots. And if we're gonna move it to the other area, I'm concerned that we, we're gonna have enough parking for the employees and the people who's gonna visit the city hall every single day. That's my biggest concern. Besides that, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Mayor LaChapelle? You're muted, mayor. Mayor, you're muted.
Just around parking and what President Gomez brought up, those items as far as the dumpster and the shed that DPW and whatnot uses is not an ideal situation now. So a part of the design and the brainstorming here will address those issues as well. Let's not forget that on the other side of 32-Pace, there's another 20 spots of parking that's barely used unless anybody, unless somebody is going into police or fire. And, you know, so I think it, yes, parking is at a premium. And, and that said, we need to look at all of the parking spaces that are really in that area and right next to the bike path. So one, I, I think that's, it's interesting to be considering that link to the bypass, bike path from where a skate park could be, but also that link brings you to more parking. And so some of that is public parking, some of that is, it's very clearly demarked what is for fire and police vehicles and that it's not a horseshoe you go around in. And I think we'll, we'll have to do some signage there as we proceed. But I, I do, parking, the parking considerations there, I don't see a big impact. Because, but it will require us to, you know, expand our vision and understand that we have more public parking that we barely use. So I, I just wanted to add that context.
Jeff?
Yeah, I just wanted, I appreciate the mayor chiming in. That's good. As I did say, parking is at a premium, and, you know, I just want to air this out here, and we can decide whether we talk about it at full council. But the interesting thing is that it's kind of at a premium during the day, which is really the exact opposite of the issue that we see at night, like on Cottage Street or in the weekend evenings. And I did, we did, we did some research on parking over the summer. And I will say that evenings, this is not a highly sought-after lot. So, you know, it's, it's kind of just one of these things about parking is, you know, right now, we're, we're trying to push people down here in the evenings. And if you drive by, it's largely empty. So it's really kind of satisfying the daytime demand, which is city hall employees. We've known, definitely noticed a lot of employees from Riverside Industries park here. So it's not parking as a premium, like, for the evening events, like Cottage Street. It's, it's kind of the daytime demand, which we can, we can monitor and we can, kind of as the mayor was suggesting, I think we can take a look at that as we go. I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that it's not a premium at a night, at nighttime for visitors. It's more just the employees and maybe visitors to Town Hall during the day.
Counselor Riley?
Hey, everybody. Yeah, so I guess the only question that I have, just out of my own curiosity, is that, you know, places like ponds, from a liability standpoint, are considered an attractive nuisance for minor children. And with the skate park's proximity to the pond, is there intent in the skate park design to have fencing placed that close to the pond? Just to make sure that, that, you know, the city doesn't come up with liability issues if younger children make their way into the pond?
Actually, that was asked the same question by CPA committee, and fencing will be considered. I mean, I think it should be for two reasons. That reason, as well as garbage going into the pond. So I think you're right on that issue, that, that is an issue the CPA committee brought up. And I'm sure that Jeff will make sure it's part of the design to look at that. Noah, last, last statement. I'd like to move on to a vote here, unless there's a lot more questions. Go ahead, Noah.
Absolutely, thank you. Just to tack on to the parking conversation about this potential connection that we came up with, with the, from the last CPA committee meeting, is that, you know, it's connecting to the bike paths. It's kind of like trying to take away the incentive of driving to the skate park so more local people don't have to park in those lots. Just wanted to add on to that.
Yeah, that was also brought up at CPA. Any other questions from counselors? I'm gonna stop the share then. If we have no more questions, I'd like a motion to recommend to the full council $42,500 from the CPA Undesignated Fund for the skate park design. You can just say so moved.
Second.
We have a motion to, to recommend to the full council supplemental appropriation of $42,500 for the skate park design. Any further discussion amongst members? Hearing non-counselor Peak? Counselor Denham?
Aye.
And Counselor Riss says aye. This is up for public hearing next week. So all of you will be welcome to, we need you to attend, Jeff, especially you. Okay?
Yep, thank you.
Moving on, software.
Thank you, everyone.
IT. I'm gonna turn it over to our number one software, Dr. Khan. If you could explain this. It looks self-explanatory to me. It looks like it's critical that we do this, and I'm happy to see it. So go ahead and, and give us a rundown.
Yeah, first, I want to start by addressing Counselor Riley's question. And I think I can summarize for those that didn't have the opportunity to see the questions. You said in, in one paragraph, "Artificial intelligence and machine-based learning technology in the public safety sector has a short but robust history of flaws that have led to overpolicing of communities of color and communities with lower socioeconomic status. If the proper checks and balances aren't put in place," you added. And I think this is key, right? The goal of improving the technology infrastructure in our safety department is to prevent crimes in the first place, to prevent them, and to better equip our officers to respond. So, you know, if proper checks and balances aren't put in place, can the access to data lead to overpolicing? Sure, but that's not our approach. Check and balances are built into this system through powerful reporting tools, a public-facing portal, a citizen email alert signup. So really combines problem-solving, information sharing, and police accountability. So, you know, really is, is on the other side of the equation. So the identification of incidents is used to keep the public updated on recent criminal activity. So armed with this information, police can use these resources, whatever they have to do, more strategically, place the officers at the place they are needed faster. And this information can also bring the public and safety closer together, right? Because we are going to share insights and information. So for example, if we see an officer stationed in our street corner, now we can go into the portal and, and we can now support the work, understand what they are doing, and, and, you know, and keep them protected too. So to the question about. And so to the question about the algorithms on the AI.
I'm going to stop you there, Karen.
Yep.
Because you're answering questions that only those who might have seen Brad's email uh are are aware of. Uh, Brad, I need you to ask the question that Karen is actually answering now. So if you could go over what you, what she's talking about, just for the rest of us and for the public.
Yeah, sure. Um, so listen, the, the I've done some pretty extensive research um in the areas of uh police accountability and as it pertains to um technology and um, so essentially the questions that I, I would like to know. Um, the first one is, does Central Square, which is the, the company that produces the CS Pro uh software suite, um, will they allow the city of East Hampton to have independent audits of their algorithms to make sure that we aren't uh disproportionately policing? Um, because historically in other communities that have utilized this type of technology, um, what ends up happening is over the course of the, the technology being used, um, many of them have what's like a neural network system and if it predicts that crimes will occur in a specific area and then police respond to those areas and they do find that crimes have happened. The AI algorithms, essentially what they do is they reinforce the processes that led to that original determination to say, this was a good uh artificial intelligent uh decision. And it starts to build preferences towards making certain decisions. If we don't have audits done on these algorithms, what happens in systems theory is that it kind of creates like a runaway feedback loop where we can have an AI that spits out behaviors that specifically says, um, you know, the neighborhood across the street from Pleasant Street is the prime place to look for crime. And then if police are responding more to those areas, naturally they're going to find more crime. If you go looking for a specific community and say, you know, the um, the intelligence is telling us that uh crimes are more likely to happen here. If you go and look, of course you're going to find more crimes. You could look in any community in East Hampton, and if you're specifically looking for crimes before they're committed, you're more inclined to find them as opposed to, you know, when police respond to crimes after they've happened. Um, so that, that's really what my central concern is. Some of these companies do not allow public uh governments to look inside that proprietary algorithm. Um, because if people have access to it, then they make the business case that uh if people see what the inside of our systems look like, then they'll have a competitive edge against us, which you know, is an economic argument. But if we don't get a chance to look inside those algorithms to make sure that that's not happening, then we come to a situation where five to 10 years from now, we find out that we've been over policing a specific community. Now, if the members of city council and you know, other folks interested would like to see some scholarly citations um or case studies on communities where this has happened, it, it has a more likely scenario of leading to over policing of people of color and people who are poor. Um, so that's all. I'm not opposed to any of this software. Um, I think that, you know, there's a compelling argument to making sure that public safety can do their job better. I think all of us want that. Um, we just need, need to make sure that it's being done equitably. That's all.
Well, thank you very much.
Wait, wait.
Yep.
Now I know why you were answering the question. So that was an excellent overview, Counsel Riley, because a lot of us, i- i- it's a technical thing, but I think if I understand your question is, does the proprietary software prevent us from looking auditing these algorithms to make sure that we're not targeting areas and specifically maybe people of color or poor areas more often? So that's, am I right? That's the question in a more simple term?
Yeah, absolutely. Because I mean, I would say, right, with, with the exception of uh Karen and maybe some others, I think there's a uh a bandwidth issue in the city of East Hampton on how qualified we are to determine if those algorithms are actually harming people or if they're accurately reporting. So you know, if we have, you know, 10 years from now, if um, you know, Karen moves on and, and works for a different city.
No, can't, can't allow it.
Well, let me, let me interrupt you because this software doesn't have algorithms. It doesn't have that type of predictive trends. It just doesn't have the capacity. So it doesn't have the capacity to, we, we checked again, we, I, I contacted Chief at Birdie, he contacted to make sure that we were accurately reporting on what is in the background. What they are just doing is data, data to identify incidents that occurred and reporting. There is not algorithms. You are completely correct about artificial intelligence. It's not only happening in police, but in medicine. It's biased, it's biased because the technology people usually developing these algorithms are white men, and this is the way they look at the world, and this is the way these algorithms get developed in the first place. And then technology, you know, they learn from each other and report in bias. So absolutely, you are correct. This is not in our system. We don't have this kind of um algorithms.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna let Tom uh ask his question and then I'll let the chief respond as well. Tom.
Great, thank you, Chair Rist. Uh, so I uh I, I really appreciated Brad's uh, you know, feedback on this because I, it was interesting, like I was, I, I still am, and I'll get to this in a second, a big uh proponent of this uh appropriation. Um, for reasons that I'll get to in a second, but when I, I, but the things that I was expecting coming through this, there was in the description, some stuff about artificial intelligence and machine learning components were sort of raising eyebrow. Just as someone who works in data analytics, I can say that my field frequently applies itself in places where it has no business applying itself. And then the process reinforces patterns that maybe we shouldn't be reinforcing. And so uh, that was, that's an element of this that I, I had some concerns about. At the same time, what I do want to say before, just be, just because I think it's important is that um, you know, we had over the last couple of years, some pretty uh tough conversations about policing in East Hampton and, and police reform and all that. And those conversations were repeatedly hampered by the lack of data that would allow us to say anything other than what our guts told us is true. You know, the data was so high level and not cross tabulated that you could just look at it and say, oh, well, this is proof that this police department does a bunch of bad stuff, or this is proof that the, this police department has never done a bad thing. And you can just interpret it however you want, because the data itself was so high level and so difficult to work on. And, and so I, you know, those of you who were there with me, probably remember me complaining at several times during that juncture about like, these data are not informative for the conversation that we want to be having right now. My understanding is that this appropriation will actually give us a soft, like a system where when you see a trend and that trend might look concerning in one way or another, you can actually kind of drill down into it, look at it from different angles and cross tabulate it. Do the sort of data analysis that's standard in public policy work in most of the country at this point. So I think it's a really good thing. I'm very in favor of it. I guess all I really want, just when I see the words artificial intelligence and its machine learning components, there's just a part of me going like, oh, what's that all about? Like, wha- like, how will that be used? And you know, like, we did a, like, last, last term, we did a thing about facial recognition, which again is something that can potentially be useful, but also can potentially like the software sometimes, i- i- you know, if you're, if you're, if there's a problem with the software and you're relying on the software to make certain decisions, it could really lead to people making some bad decisions, you know, without any individual person necessarily meaning any bad from, from it. And I, I just think that that's something whenever we see that sort of technology introduced, that I, I just feel like it's something we should just consider, like, what is, what are, what are we actually talking about here? And is this something that we? I think this appropriation should go through regardless, but if that's something that we're going to start talking about within public safety, like, is that somewhere where maybe the public safety committee and the police want to sit down and sort of just get an understanding of what we're ac- what we're actually talking about here and, and what, like, what ways the community would actually be comfortable with the use of this technology? Sorry, I had a little long winded, but.
That's good. Uh, I'm gonna let Chief respond because I think what we're talking about here is data collection that helps improve public safety, as you mentioned, Tom. Um, so Chief, go ahead.
So I, excuse me, I had some, I did uh make some notes after um Counsel Riley's um email. Um, so intelligent led policing uh and Karen hit on its prime prevention. Um, I look at this particularly with the public portal. It'll get the public engaged in problem solving with the police, uh, police accountability and, you know, enhanced intelligence, excuse me. Um, and Karen hit on uh historical um allocation decisions where we need to reallocate our resources. Um, you know, and I, I said, this, this system is designed for a safer community, not for us to target them. And it's just extracting and capturing data that we already have currently in our system. So it doesn't do predictive policing, uh, which I, I think that's what Counsel Riley was driving, driving at. This is not predictive policing at all. Um, and like I said, I, I, I li- I look at this to empower, have the neighborhoods be empowered to help the police so that we can better serve them. Um, then again, it's historical data that's in our system. There's a component to this called crime mapping dot com, which is a public portal. So the public can go in and there's also public alerts where if you wanted to get in on it, if there's a crime that happened in your neighborhood, you would be alerted to it. Um, and then the, you know, the, you could, they, the portal, you could go into the crime mapping and actually look at um, different areas that there were, there were crimes. Um, but not necessarily predicting what's going to happen next. And, and I guess from a philosophical standpoint, invasion of privacy and avoiding profiling and respecting people's rights. Uh, that has to happen in any approach to crime prevention. Um, so whether or not, um, you know, predictive um policing uh as Counsel Riley was explaining, it's still going to be the determination of the police chief as to where we're deploying resources. Um, and I'm very cognizant of um the studies that uh Counsel Riley was discussing, but I'll give you an example. Just a very brief one. So we got um beat up pretty bad with catalytic converters thefts on Hoyt Street. And so we went back and looked at all of those incidents and we determined, uh, you know, an area of time. And it was like three, four in the morning. So we did put um, you know, patrols out there because we were, you know, all the neighbor cars, they'd start, start the cars in the morning and it sounded like they lost their exhaust. Um, and then we, you know, we, we then we collaborated with the area police departments and we wound up um, you know, catching the suspects. But we were focusing like our downtown car on Hoyt Street to either catch uh or prevent by just being out there. Um, the, you know, the larcenies. And I, I could go on and on with different kinds of crimes, but this software is only going to evaluate, it's already in our system and report it out much better than we can do now. We, it, it's super difficult. The system we're using now is circa 1996.
So let me ask the question. Uh, it sounds like this with the portal being, this adds transparency to policing in that people are going to be able to see the data and where policing is going on. And as you said, there's a, the catalytic converter issue or something. It, it, it's available more to the public in a sense. That's what the portal is all about. Am I correct?
Yep, absolutely. And again, we're trying to en- empower our community. Um, you know, to help us police better and to protect um and better serve them. Um, and get more community engagement for sure.
Okay. Uh, questions from any other counselors?
I don't have a question.
Uh, go ahead.
I don't, I don't have a question. I'm just, uh, I'm just, I, I'm concerned about all of these pieces. Um, you know, I, I, I'm someone who's a visual learner, so I kind of need to see it in order to be able to understand it. And so it's, I, I hear everything that people are saying and, and I, I get that, but I kind of want to make, see it to, to know that I understand how it functions and what it works and what it can do and, and what it shouldn't be doing. Um, you know, I guess the, I guess I do have a question i- i- in terms of one of the things that I've been reading over the last couple of days is a lot of times these systems don't necessarily fit into the strategy of the community around community safety, but it's kind of ad hoc where we got some money and so we thought, hey, let's put it towards this thing. And that doesn't necessarily fit into what we're actually trying to accomplish. Um, and so I guess that's my question is, what are we trying to accomplish? And, and is this the right system to be able to do that? Because sometimes we just make decisions because we have funding, but it actually just doesn't fit our, our, our overall strategy for what we want the community.
Karen, do you want to answer that or?
Yes, yes, because you know, I think we are, uh, you're right. We're just asking, talking about one aspect, right? And I think we need to remember, police have used information about crimes to identify patterns and to anticipate crimes forever. This is the way they operate. This system is going to allow them to do this better, faster. Right? The intelligence is there that you can now put in keyword and search. So the reporting, the data being there available. But there are many components. So one of the things that I found very and, and what happens is it's all integrated. So Central Square bought the, the program that we have now, IMC and many others. And with all of them, they integrated this program, this sophisticated, this top, top notch because it's scalable, because it's customizable to work to your workflows and created this program. There are many, many features included in there that address the workings of a safety um department completely in one database where data can be shared, where data is secure. We we lost data already. So um, so data is going to be secured in an equipment that works, but some of the features are top notch. For example, one of the things that I learned when people call to 911, the question is, oh, what are you seeing? Where are you? Um, people respond many times, I don't know, because they don't know or because they are in shock, or maybe because there is some active shooter event and they are hiding and they don't even know where they are. This program is going to allow dispatch and also the police officers to send a request. And if you have a phone, your phone now is a tracking device. And if you're running and hiding, they can follow you. And also they can send a request for you to take pictures and video. And that video, it doesn't stay in your system. It goes into, it's protected because it's personal information. It goes into the system, CS Pro. Um, so that's one of them. At the same time, the police officers are going to be able to use their devices to record data. See, I imagine the work of a police officer after having an accident and coming and having to type what happened. You know, I will remember not even half of what I saw. Now they can document, create audio, and that goes into the record automatically. So it's going to enhance the workflows across the department. Um, it has a financial piece that is included. So yeah, we had KBS and our financial system, but there's specific finances of the department that are going to be addressed inside that is specific to how, how are they managing their schedules? They work 24 hours, et cetera, et cetera. So it's designed specific for, for that department and is customizable because they, they now build the program that has to fit Boston and East Hampton, right? So they know it needs to adjust. Um,
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna go to Mayor LaChapelle, then I'll go to you, Tom. Mayor LaChapelle.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, to, uh, just to go to Counselor Dedham's, um, question, always a, a good question. The search for this kind of software in the police really, um, started when I took office for two very distinct reasons. One, I knew that what we were using, um, was just plain old and really left the city and its citizens, residents exposed to lost data, incorrect assumptions, uh, on the last leg. The other is just on a very basic understanding, uh, we could not disaggregate the data in the current system. And we're stuck kind of like in a Bermuda triangle of what system we could go to that spoke to other law enforcement agencies, but also gave East Hampton the data that, that residents have been asking for and advocacy groups have been asking for, and even the, the police department to, to try to figure out resources. Um, in twenty twenty with the mayor's pledge, that was one of the strongest recommendations and frustrations is that the software that the police were using, in no way corroborated what, what we were seeing on the streets and larger patterns, uh, because the software was so limited. Also, just basic reports around exactly what Council Riley put up is, you know, where, where the police are, what's the demographic of that neighborhood? What's the, you know, where are, you know, um, where are we writing citations? Where are we not? And Mayor's, uh, pledge at, with their facilitator, Professor Hendricks, kind of laid out some best practices. And in that report, uh, there are citations where, uh, Professor Hendricks leads you to of, of what should be, what you should be able to do with police software. The city council review of that, uh, a report, um, also really pushed at that point around the software and it being fluid. And we've, we're still working with the Department of Justice who's in support of this. I think the key thing though, um, and, and, um, I think some programs are more, um, malleable than others to this is regardless of the tool, it's the culture and how that tool is used that's going to set a pace around culture and really taking a look at, um, where, where crime is found and how it is found and how it's dealt with. Um, and, and that's still an issue that, you know, is unresolved in our community. This is one step, uh, to put it forward. The other important, um, uh, thing is the expenditure of cannabis money and the grant that we sought was very purposely focused around what the mayor's pledge report recommended. And also some conversations very, actually Counselor Rothschild had more in-depth conversation. And, and I started the conversation some time ago with like, uh, academic, um, institutions like Westfield State University that can look at that day, data for exactly what Counsel Riley, um, and, and also, um, some legal review. Important also to know, you know, when you talk about what can you do to, to really open up, um, to inclusive, uh, policing, um, review of data, uh, was, you know, is also who controls the, the data? Is the, and who controls and oversees the software? And do they have the requisite expertise and training? So this is a big shift for East Hampton because we're moving to, I mean, uh, Chief Alberti and I have talked about it where, um, police are trained to look at data and to program and to point resources towards and, and, and to have a more open relationship with its community. They are not necessarily trained with a master's or dare I say a PhD in internet techn- in information technology. So this program switches and civilianizes the oversight of, um, of police collection data. With the, you know, the, I, 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 I think of two officers right now who've been really involved and not only what we're moving towards, but what we, what we have now for software. But that is important to, to understand that we are able to bump up to this data collection because we're civilianizing the oversight of it in our citywide IT department that we just formally recognize. It, it, so when we're seeing different things in the data or corruption, uh, and, and I don't mean corruption like police corruption. I mean corruption in, you know, how something is working or a failure of a survey, a, a server. We've got, you know, experts in the field who are intimately equated, not only with the software that we're putting before you, but how it integrates other systems and, um, how we can, um, use and, um, produce reports that are very pinpoint to what we're concerned about. So I think there's, you know, again, I, I, I just want to be very clear. I think that there's still context and concerns from the public that, that both of the counselors bring forward. I, I look at that as culture and assignment of oversight in a, a much longer conversation and, um, allows us to get more quickly to, um, the community policing. And I, and I think of the, the shifts that we're doing right now in the midst of a pandemic and, and public health looking and, uh, Youth, Healthy Youth Coalition getting involved, um, around the community policing. So again, it's more holistic, um, and, and can, you know, cross, cross strategies. I don't think that's a word, uh, cross-training, cross-use of tools, um, among our departments. It has, has brought us some really great outcomes, um, in, in more like DPW and planning things. But I, I think this is the next, um, frontier. This is where we go next when we're seeing a crossover of IT, health, police, fire, um, all working off of one tool and a set of the data. So we can get better at it or decide where we have to move. So, um, I, yeah, long answer, as long as maybe a Jeff, Jeff Bag would give for an answer. My, my apologies. But I, I just wanted to be, yeah, I really appreciate the question about like, oh, we've got money, new tool. Or, you know, it's an easy grant. It'll be a headline. Um, we didn't go after software for a long time because we couldn't find it. Like there was nothing and, and, you know, Chief Alberti and Professor Hendricks and Derek Dean from DOJ just kept looking and, you know, Nicole would say, um, oh, I, well, Professor Hendricks would say, you should be able to do XYZ. And we would look at, okay, we're going to overlay this or that. And, and it was like, that doesn't, that doesn't do XYZ. That's a band-aid. We're going to hold off. And, um, and being able, the Department of Justice, uh, was really helpful. So I could talk to other mayors who had gone through bigger incidences and like Charlottesville and go back and say, so this is what I wish as a mayor, I knew my police department actually could do and I didn't assume, or, you know, the plea in our debrief. So I'm happy to ask, um, answer more specific questions, but I just wanted to give that overall con, um, overall context.
Well, thank you, Mayor. That was a lot of information. Counselor Peak.
So, yeah, just to reiterate, this is a really important appropriation to me just because I feel like a lot of our conversations about policing have been unen- like they just, we just haven't had, like there's been data that we all want, but we haven't had. Um, but I do, I do appreciate this, uh, you know, the concern that, uh, Counsel Riley was bringing forward. And to me, like, just broaching like a possibility on how we can move forward on this. Chief, would you feel comfortable once this, this has been implemented? Maybe, uh, Dr. Comherd as well, maybe coming to the council, maybe to public safety and just doing a briefing on, on the software and how it works and what its capabilities are?
I, I think I can do, do one better. Counselor Peak, um, when I spoke to, uh, the representative of the software company, it was too short notice after we got, um, Counsel Riley's email to have them present. But we told them there'll be a future meeting and they were, uh, very anxious and to, to help out and come and answer any questions. So, um, as awesome as Karen is, uh, I think the software developer would be better suited for, for a presentation.
I don't know. It's kind of hard to talk, Karen, but we'll, we'll, we'll let them go. I'll trust you.
I, I've worked in software sales, so I don't trust software salesmen, but, but.
I think as far as like an overview of what, what.
For sure. Absolutely.
I, I'd like to try and move on. We have a lot more on the agenda. So Brad, you had something and, uh, and Counselor Gomez after that.
Yeah. So I just, I wanted to say thank you to everybody for, um, making space for the conversation and humbling my, um, due diligence on this issue. Um, I was at least ninety-five percent on board with this and it was, it was just something that I felt like we needed to, um, have a public conversation about. So thank you to all of you that have weighed in. Um, I really appreciate it. And, um, you know, I look forward to, um, any extra information that people can provide. Just making sure that I'm doing my part on behalf of the public. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, quick, um, this is a great, um, new tool that we're going to have. And, um, that was part of our recommendation because I was part of the mayor's pledge group. But I do have a few questions. Uh, the first one is after we, if we got the appropriation and we approve it, we're going to have this new technology, new software. Is the officers going to require to, uh, get a training for it? And if the answer is yes, who's going to do it? And my last question is, we're talking about the police department a lot, but I see this public safety IT. So is this is going to help the fire department and if it's going to have, uh, help the fire department, the EMT, how, uh, that is going to improve those two other, um, entities from the police safety? Thank you.
So who's going to train and is the fire department going to be helped with this?
Yeah. So a part of this quote, so it's going to take us at least six months to a year. They already told us from day one, the day we signed. This is a big transition and one of the things we are very happy about is that this is a company that understands our data, our current system, and we are not going to lose data in the migration. So it's data migration, setting up the new servers, setting up new backup systems so we don't lose data. And then training, extensive training on each one of the different modules. Unfortunately, the program is designed for police and dispatch. There is not, nothing for fire or EMS. Chief Norris, now, so currently we have one system for EMS that doesn't speak much with the system we have and one system for fire that doesn't speak to anything. So Chief Norris is looking into a system that at least combines fire and EMS. But the nature of the work is very different, right? EMS needs information, health information, medicines. Fire needs another kind of information. So systems tend to be designed with their main, main function as a goal. But smart systems can share information. So that's the goal today. Now to have a system that is able to share informations across systems. And the challenge, this has been the challenge for a long time, but there's extensive training. There is, uh, in the, in the code, there is a timeline. They have a project manager helping us walk through each step because they know, we know it's not going to be an easy process.
I have one question that is not related to the software. I remember that, I don't know, it was like two years ago, you had to go over with a soldering iron and repair the IT servers in the police department. Are the servers getting replaced or what's going on with that? And how is this software? Where is it going to be? Is it going to be in those new servers or is it somewhere else? I mean, that's scary that, that those servers are so old that you have to put them back together yourself. So I was wondering about that.
Yes. So it's expensive because we're going to buy three servers. You know, we're going to run things as we should be running them now. They are forcing us. If you want, they said, if you really want the system, this is the environment that you need to have. We're going to have one server that is called the production server. We're going to have one server that is the testing server. So we're constantly testing things that is going to serve also as a backup and we're going to have a hot backup. Anything happens to our production within minutes, we have another system running.
And those servers are being purchased or we already have in line to get those new ones?
Exactly. That's part of the quote. That's a big piece of, of the money that we're going to spend and they are going to be housed in safety in the basement where we have.
This, it's part of this appropriation?
Yes.
So this isn't just software, it's hardware too?
Yeah, it's hardware, it's training and it's the license for the first year.
My apologies. That's great to hear. Uh, anything else from anyone? All right. Hearing none. I, I would like to have a motion to move recommend to the full council, a hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents to be transferred from cannabis for, uh, the IT, I'm going to say the IT improvements for the police department.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Uh, any more discussion amongst committee members? Hearing none. Counselor Peak.
Aye.
Counselor Dunham?
Aye.
Counselor says aye. I forgot to ask you, Hedo, after this one forty-four, what's left of cannabis stabilization?
I was wondering about that.
I forgot.
That's okay. We'll have, after this, we will have two hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Okay, down to the penny. All right, we're, we're using that cannabis money. That's good.
Yes.
All right. Committee members, we are not going to talk about the review of the council clerk stipend because that's going to affect the FY twenty-three budget. So we have time to deal with that as well as my request to review the pay grades for the clerk, assessor and auditor because that has to deal with, uh, retention of employees and how are these grades, are they okay? And that's a major, uh, research and subject. So we're not going to deal with those this evening. We have to move on. If that's okay with the committee, I'd like to do that. Okay. I want to move on to Mr. Nullman and all his requests. These again are supplemental appropriations from enter- enterprise retained earnings. The enterprise retained earnings, uh, Connie, if I can explain this to you, this is somewhat similar to free cash in the general fund. It's money in the enterprise fund that can be used to supplement the water sewer department budget under the Department of Public Works. And, uh, the first thing up is the water meters, fifty thousand dollars. We've done this every year, um, to replace water meters. I think I've asked this every year, Greg, uh, how many radio water, do we still have non-radio water meters in town? We still have a bunch of those, right?
Yeah, we have a handful out there. We've had trouble over the past couple of years with entering homes through the pandemic. You know, stay on the course we were on.
Uh, we lost you, Greg. Internet down. Greg? Ouch.
After all.
Greg, we just lost you. I don't know if you said a lot of stuff. You're back now. Can you hear it?
Yep, I can hear you. Sorry. So over the last couple of years, we've kind of slowed down just because we couldn't enter homes due to the pandemic to get meters swapped out. So we're not on course with where we want to be, but we are over ninety percent at this point. So.
Some of this money will replace those.
Absolutely.
On radio and radio means you don't have to go in the house. You, you get your, it's also much more accurate for billing purposes and everything else, correct?
Yeah, we don't even have, we don't have, we have, we don't have to go into any homes anymore. Some have touchpads on the outside where the, we have to just approach the house and connect a piece of equipment to the house for a second and take it off and get the reading that way. Uh, these, the newer meters are all entirely radio where the, the signal broadcasts much better and we're, we have some better reading equipment now. So we can, we can read the whole city in about five days, even at the, even the point we're at. So the closer we get to, to being a hundred percent radio, the quicker we can get reading done.
And this also is replacing some of the first non, first radio meters we've put in. I mean, this is not just an upgrade of non-radio. It's also constantly, we're constantly doing this. We're going to have this appropriation every year to constantly repair water meters, even the newer ones that were put in maybe five years ago or whatever.
Well, I'm not, we, we tend to get, they'll knock on wood, we get fifteen years out of them.
Okay.
See some, two thousand, two thousand four, five that are, the batteries are dying in the radios. But in those situations, we can just change the radio on the outside of the house and it's a lot less expensive than changing the entire meter. So.
Okay. Questions from counselors? Connie, have anything? This is fairly self-expensive. So I'd like a. So, I'd like a motion to approve, to recommend to the full council fifty thousand dollars to be transferred from enterprise retained earnings for the FY twenty-two water meter replacement account.
So moved.
So moved. Second. Uh, any further discussion amongst members? Hearing none, Counselor Peak?
Aye.
Counselor Dunham?
Aye.
Counselor says aye. Moving on, um, you listed a bunch of things that have to be repaired. Why don't you go over them really quickly? This, this hundred and twelve thousand is for miscellaneous repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. Our wastewater treatment plant is, is, uh, it's also other things that have to be done. So, just talk about it quickly, Greg.
We just, it's been a somewhat challenging year at, for the wastewater plant. I can't really attribute it to any one thing other than the aging of our equipment. The bucket elevators and the grit chambers are, are just worn out. We can't get parts anymore. A lot of this stuff is original to the plant from nineteen seventies. And it, it's all at a point where almost total replacement is needed and we, repair is not, no longer feasible. The Zurich air actuated valves that we have on there are, they're, they're just completely obsolete. Can't parts for them anymore. We've, you know, stole pieces from here and there to keep things operating to, you know, to try to save money. And it's gone on for too long. We just, we have to start making some investments down there. Ashley Circle, uh, the lift station, one of the pumps failed. You know, we have a redundant pump in, in every station. There's a second pump to, to take off running when, when one goes bad. But, um, the one that did go bad was beyond repair, needed to be replaced. The, the next item I have on there, the cellular skated communication terminal replacements, that has to do with the five G cellular upgrades. The, it, it's kinda, everything's going, their whole system is going to four G. The three G that we're communicating on now is no longer going to be supported by the company. So, we have to swap out all those terminals at some of the wastewater pump stations. So, tho- those stations communicate with the plant to give, you know, runtimes, pit levels, uh, flow, flow meters, all the, um, information from any station to get back to the plant. We have an alarm if a pump doesn't start when it was supposed to, that, you know, lets the operators know so we can go out and get ahead of it before turns into a SSO or other issue. The processed water strainer, we use processed water front at the wastewater treatment plant. That's been somewhat treated, that can be used for cleaning and other things that it's not, not as clean as drinking water, but it's, we refer to as plant water. And we're able to, uh, you know, reuse it at the plant. So, we're not using clean water for things we don't, doesn't need to be clean water. But the strainer that is on that system is just deteriorated to the point where it can no longer be repaired and also needs to be replaced. So, it's really that the combination of all these things are the wastewater plants just showing its, showing its age. The cellular communication terminals that we're replacing, uh, you know, really aren't that old and it's unfortunate that, but it's just technology, the way things, the way things progress. This stuff doesn't last forever. Really, it's just the plant is, you know, I'm, I'll be back in front of you guys, I think, later this year with more stuff at the, at the wastewater treatment plant. You know, as we look at water and sewer rates and the investments that we need to make down there, it's, uh, we're in for some tough conversations, I think, to keep the plant, you know, moving along. So.
Well, anything that we can prevent? The sewer problem, I think it was down in Florida at Fort Lauderdale. I recall the sewer backing up into people's homes. So, yes, let's fix anything that needs fixing.
Yeah, this is the, and it's, it's, it's not, you know, fun things to spend money on. Like, nobody wants to put a roof on their house. It doesn't make it more comfortable or better. But it's, uh, you, you gotta keep your wastewater plant running and that's really all we're trying to do here. These are, I, I haven't, you know, approached the mayor for much for appropriations. We're waiting to hear on CDBG grant, um, for Cherry Street and the sanitary sewer that we need to replace there as part of the reconstruction and the municipal vulnerability planning, grant work we're doing over there. That grant money won't cover the CDBG, it won't cover the sanitary sewer replacement. So, if we don't get the CDBG grant, we'll be, I'll be back, looking to talk about the funding to replace the sanitary sewer line on Cherry Street. So.
Mayor LaChapelle?
More yet.
Sorry, your hand up. Is it still up?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Uh, um, yeah, I just, I wouldn't want, uh, thank Carl down at wastewater and of course Director Nudelman for going through the many fixes and challenges we have, especially at wastewater and to come up with this list. You know, it's, I, I don't wanna say it's innovative because I, I don't wanna promote that our wastewater is modern, but innovative in the way that Carl and Greg really went through what was needed, which is basically everything down there and figured out where to spend the money for the most impact as we're looking at further, um, you know, changes needed, upgrades or, or whatnot. And, and it's done a nice job. It, it is amazing, all of the money that Greg could ask for, uh, for DPW. And he does ask for it, but when it comes to appropriations, he's very focused. And he spends the money very wisely. I will, I'm glad that Greg brought up the, uh, community block development grant that if we don't get, um, we really have some, we're gonna have some hard choices in DPW because we, we have to do that, um, that, you know, the underground, the sewer stuff at that project. But it's, you know, it's a two million dollar project and, and the city is always responsible for the sewer and the water. So, um, that's a very deliberate stacking of grants. But it's also the way, it's also why we looked at Cherry Street because it was, it was a way to do six things at once and the city would have put resources there anyways. And the last, um, you know, comment that I'll, I'll make, um, you know, I, I was trying to explain this to somebody and I said, basically, what's going on with the wastewater in the city? It's literally, um, the whole plant is, is going down the toilet, literally. Like, it's, it's just a mess over there and we have very hard, see, I got Greg to smile. There you go. But we, I think, certainly the board, um, and Greg and myself have some very, um, hard choices, but, but also looking at some, some solutions here more quickly than not to, to address wastewater. Because we, we need to. But I, I guess the, uh, the overall is the appropriations were very well done here, very efficient. And they're very mindful on Greg's part that the future of wastewater and sewer might look very different than like us building a whole new plant and, and keeping us going until we can really analyze, uh, the best solution for the city there. So, thank you for the consideration.
You know, right, right before we all shut down from the pandemic, maybe like two or three weeks before that, I remember, it was like one of the last times I went out, I was at Blue Theaters. And, um, I ended up just pulling up a seat next to a wastewater engineer. And, um, so we were just talking about wastewater engineers. I didn't know anything about that. And she said a fascinating statistic that stuck with me that in the twentieth century wastewater engineers saved more human lives than doctors. So, I say we keep that thing, uh, we make sure that things run in real well. I'm in support of this, obviously.
Yeah.
Well, that statement is quite profound. I go through with it.
You know, I just wanted, yeah, I just wanna say, Greg, I, I've never, I've never in person, but, um, just listening to you talk, I can see the the challenges that you're facing. And I just wanted to know that I appreciate the work that you're doing. Clearly, there's, I'm new to this and there's clearly a lot going on, but I can, I could see on your face the challenges and I appreciate the efforts that you're making to, to keep us going.
Thank you, thank you.
The biggest thing for me on this whole thing, Greg, is the cellular communication terminal replacement. Because I imagine if you have a pump down or there's a flow problem, being able to see that in real time, you know, at the office rather than having to go inspect it, you send somebody out there to get it fixed right away. That kind of efficiency to me means you're preventing what could be a serious tragedy if the pumps go down or something. So, it's amazing, uh, the connection that three G and five G, I didn't think it'd get into wastewater. But it is, it's right there. So, that's interesting. And, uh, wow, you learn so much at these meetings.
It's unfortunate that they can't support the older devices, really, being that they're not that old. But all, all these companies have their ways to keep making money. So.
Oh, yeah, let's replace all the phones so that everybody goes to five G. All right, is there any other questions on the hundred and twelve thousand one? I'll take a motion then to, to, nah, to recommend a supplemental appropriation of one hundred and twelve thousand dollars from enterprise retained earnings for various wastewater treatment miscellaneous repairs.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Counselor Peak?
Aye.
Counselor Dunham?
Aye.
And Counselor says aye. Now, the next one, I brought up the, at the beginning of the meeting, I brought up the fact that we have the ability to reduce a, an appropriation. And apparently Jamie Webb, working with the grants, found out that we don't need forty-two, six fifty-five, that this can be reduced to twenty-nine, seven sixty-one. Jamie, do you wanna explain your email that, that, that that happened? I like to see it because obviously we need every penny we can save in enterprise retained earnings.
Yeah, um, so I'd happy to talk about that. Actually, after I sent out that email though, I had a conversation with Greg, who had a conversation with Hadel, um, that may trump that. So, I'm actually gonna defer, um, for the moment. Because, so, so we, we, the, the, the short of it is that the, um, the construction is substantially complete. Um, we're waiting, um, we have punch list items. There might be a few things that come up in the spring and there are reasons why we may not want to reduce the request. If all goes well, the, the cost will not go above the, uh, twenty-nine thousand, seven sixty-one. We wanted to, um, make sure that we had that flexibility should a, an unanticipated cost come, come in. The, the contract was originally built, uh, sorry, was originally, um, bid, um, at that higher amount. So, we're just, uh, wanna keep our options.
So, you wanna keep it the same just in case contingency wise you might need it? Is that a correct, uh, assessment of what you're saying, Greg? You, you agree with that? I was gonna ask, sure.
The other thing that's important to note is that if we don't spend the money, it will go right back to, to retained earnings and neck, in next year, July first.
Right, you have to wait until it's certified. You don't get to use it this year though. I just wanted to make sure that-
That twelve thousand dollars.
If, if there's twelve thousand dollars left over, it's like what happens with free cash on that side of the city. It does, it, it, you guys, Tom, Connie, you understand that? If they don't use the twelve thousand, it goes back in, but it can't go back in until it's certified after July one. So, it is money that if you have other things you need repaired, you're not gonna be able to get to until after, after that. And that's okay. But you wanna make sure there's enough money to hit your punch list, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, so we're not reducing it now. Okay, I mean, I, I, I wanted to ask, are you sure? So, it sounds like this is better. Let's keep it at the forty-two.
Yeah, there, there shouldn't be much in the spring, but you, you just never know.
Okay. Well, I don't have a problem with that. Obviously, it has to be done. So, Tom, Connie, you have any questions on this? No?
You don't need to, uh, ask me too hard about infrastructure work in precinct three.
President Gomez?
Thank you. I just wanna know, um, what is the balance of that account after this appropriation?
Uh, Hadel, do you have that? I didn't ask you for that, enterprise retained earnings?
I do. After all these appropriations, it's gonna be two million, two hundred eighty-seven thousand, three fifty-two would be the balance.
Oh, that's pretty good. Glad to hear that. At least a twelve thousand dollar drop won't hurt it if, if you don't use it.
Yeah, and this is the first, uh, these are the first three appropriation after the retained earning was certified. So, that, that's where we, we stand.
All right. Well, that makes me actually feel better about Greg's warning that there's more coming. So, I, I hope we have the money to pay for them because we have to keep the city running. Anything else, councils? The hearing none, I would take a motion to approve forty-two thousand, six fifty-five from enterprise retained earnings for the FY twenty-two Charles Street CB, CDBG sewer improvements.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Counselor Peak?
Aye.
Counselor Dunham?
Aye.
The Counselor says aye. So, Greg, we're gonna need you at the public hearing.
Yeah, I'll be there next week. Sure.
And counselors, I just wanted you both to know that the reason I move things forward quickly is exactly this week. To get them into committee and not set public hearings adds another two weeks to the time at which they don't get the money to make these fixes. And that could be critical. So, my policy has been unless it's really controversial, let's get it done. Government is slow as it is. So, I want you to know that that's my thinking as a chair of finance is to get these out there if they can really help the city, especially these kinds of maintenance issues. So, um, we can always delay something if counselors need more information, uh, on any subject. But I, I like to put it forward because, uh, when the budget's done in the, in June, we don't anticipate what maintenance we need. We, if we put all the money in there, then it sits there until the next fiscal year and it can't be used for somebody else, something else. So, this is better. Once we, once we target or once we recognize maintenance items, for instance, they can be supplemental appropriated instead of being in a budget and not used. So, that's why I moved them pretty quickly to public hearings. So, you'll see that from me. That doesn't mean we can't continue a public hearing or we can, you know, if I, if a public hearing is scheduled and either of you need more information on any topic, that's, that's fine. But that's why I do it. I just want you to know that. I have nothing else, uh, for this evening. Oh, Hadel, um, and Jen, can you guys be prepared for the next meeting to do your, your quarterly reviews? Is that appropriate, the fiscal report for the final quarter of the year, uh, Hadel?
Um, I can do as of November, um, or December is still in process of, uh, depositing and, um, the receipts are still not done.
So, why do we wait till Jan? Well, our next meeting nineteenth would be till the end of the month. We'll wait till the first, I, I'd like to get the full quarter. So, why don't we wait until February for that then?
Yeah, that would be an ideal thing. Yeah.
So, so, counselor, so you know, we put these here so that we get constant reports of how our cities fiscally doing. So, that report comes to the finance. That's why these are permanent agenda items. And, uh, do you have anything on new funding, uh, Jen?
Um, I actually, I'm sorry?
Do you wanna wait as well or can you do it next meeting?
Well, you're talking for the, like, the CARES and FEMA and, and all that.
Well, that plus American Rescue Act money, I don't know, whatever's, whatever's coming in that we want it to be, the mayor wanted us to be very transparent about that. So, I wanna see when you wanna report that. How we're spending that federal money because the council has no authority over that. It's, it's coming in from the feds, from the state, and it's being spent. And you want it to be very transparent about it. So, whenever it's convenient for you to do that, why don't we wait till February? Well, I don't wanna go until February.
Yeah, February would be best because I actually, I'm good with the CARES and the FEMA, but, um, the ARPA money, but I wanna, you know, put something together and talk to the mayor about how she wants it presented. So.
Good, good, good. Okay, so we'll wait till February for that. So, uh, Hadel?
Yes, so I just wanted to let, well, other counselors know that with the revenue reports, which I do for quarterly, we normally have five weeks after the month is closed because, uh, treasurer has to do their side of the bank account balancing. And then the final piece gets posted is the interest. And we really can't, we can do the day-to-day one, like payroll can be posted. The AP checks can be processed, but all the deposits which are, which are coming into the bank side, that takes a little while to identify and reconcile. That's why we need five weeks after.
That's why we need five weeks after the month is closed. So that's why I'm asking to give me time till February second week to get the reports ready.
I would rather have a full quarterly report than a partial one. So that's good.
Yeah.
And it just keeps us abreast of how our revenues are doing because we're charged with approving these supplemental appropriations. And if things are looking tight, we'd like to have that information. But so far, so good, so thank you both.
Thanks.
I will take a motion to adjourn. Somebody?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, uh, Councillor Peak?
Aye.
Councillor Dunham?
Aye.
I, I will say aye. Thank you all, we'll see you, um, next time. And that's.
Two weeks.
Oh, council, two weeks, uh, always at five o'clock, two weeks. So I don't know what that date is. Anyway, that's when we'll see you, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
All right, good night, everybody.